I hope fine. I want to be sure.
Sure. Yeah, most of my stuff's telecommuting anyway, so I'm pretty fortunate this started up, they really didn't change much.
Missed any of the last few meetings?
It's about time.
Yeah, last time you guys had a little controversy a lot, as I recall.
With the cannon? Yeah, I kind of wish you were there, wanted to ask legal questions.
Reading the minutes, I thought it was interesting that this attorney said that we should not or could not act or something, it's like.
Are you telling?
Just the sole no vote.
Alright, I don't know where the, I didn't read all the agreement to see how clear it was or wasn't on that.
He had to spell, I don't know, I do not have a legal background, it's just information provided. A little confused.
Yeah, I don't know if they're eroding him or not. Did he speak at all?
Nope. I mean, that business has been there for years and sounds like they've been pretty good now that the trucks where they're supposed to be. Like it's off hours, if someone likes to profit, it's going to drop off the truck, they don't.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're in, he's in the site, the scopes, scope site, what's the right word?
Yeah, that means that there needs to be some, somebody.
So, what I'm saying is, yeah. Oh. Correct.
I saw on the news the other day where some contractor put up a four foot wall and he didn't get a building permit. Kind of screwed it out to the horizon. So I'm guessing anything's a problem.
Alright, if you're in trouble for a four foot wall, you're going to be in trouble for demolition. Yeah, I Googled it. My, uh, my parents.
That's Diana's.
Oh, really? Oh, that's cool. Yeah, nice.
Does it do your turkey?
Oh, yeah.
Pretty good? Alright. It is now seven PM, August twenty seventh? Okay. It is now seven PM, August twenty seventh, twenty twenty, and I call this meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask that all commissioners and audience members please silence their cell phones at this time. Can we do a roll call?
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Perrin? Ms. Kane?
Present.
Mr. Arnie?
Present.
Mr. Ritz?
Present.
Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Hankins?
Here.
Ms. Cutsforth? Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
This meeting will be conducted under the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the back vestibule and on the website. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty third, twenty twenty regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty third meeting.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Jacobson?
Motion carried.
At this time, I would accept, I would entertain a motion to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, memos, handouts regarding each application. Staff, has any updates been since it was posted?
No updates.
Motion to approve the package as presented.
Second.
McCain? There are no consent agenda items tonight. Public hearings. I will read into record each hearing one at a time, I will then invite the public for, or the applicant to come to the stand to make the case, to kind of explain. Then open it up for public hearing for or against, anyone that wishes to speak on the record for that item at that time should come up then. When you do, please sign in and state your name and address for the record. I reserve the right to limit it if there's a large number of people that come up. At the end of the day, please respect the golden rule, treat others as you want them to treat you. Item three A, request to rezone lot one, Riverview Heights replat four, being a replat of lot one, Riverview Heights replat three. And lot six, Riverview Heights replat from RE and RS one twenty to RE for the purpose of an existing single family residence. And small subdivision plat, lot one, Riverview Heights replat four. Applicants Tom and Mary Hanson, general location five one three Ridge Road. Case numbers Z dash two zero zero seven dash zero six and S dash two zero zero seven dash one two. Is the applicant here tonight?
Here, present. Tom Hanson.
Can you say your, uh, address for the record too? Your address.
Uh, my, Tom Hanson, my address is five one three Ridge Road, Bellevue.
When you get a chance to sign in for the record.
Okay. Okay. Uh, the purpose why I'm here is, um, our house is situated on our lot, we don't have room to put an addition on it. Uh, become handicapped, so I'm trying to make my house more handicap accessible for myself. Um, to drive into a garage on a level lot and come in and then have an elevator to service each of the three floors. To get up to the main, uh, level and the bedrooms upstairs and stuff. And, uh, Hank, uh, my neighbor, which has been my neighbor for, ever since we built the house in eighty-five. He became a little bit, uh, not ill, but just couldn't maintain his house anymore. He offered to sell it to me, so, at which time we, I did purchase it from him and, um, now we're, uh, we demolished it and, you know, put an addition on there. And that's the reason why we're here for it, to try to get those lots put together so we can put the additions, so both of them, he'll have plenty of side room and for the side and everything.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak for or against on this matter? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, wishes?
Thank you.
I had a question for staff, if I could. I had a couple of the neighbors ask if a, um, permit was pulled for demolition for the house next door.
Yes.
Sure it was, but, okay.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion to approve as recommended?
Motion by Arnie? Second by Ackley.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go in front of, for public hearing on, at the city council on October sixth. Moving on to item three B. Request to rezone lots one and two, South Roads Technology Park from BG dash PCO to BGH. For the purpose of further commercial development. Applicant, Deepwell DBA, South Roads Technology Park, general location one zero zero one Fort Crook Road North. Case number Z dash two zero zero seven dash zero nine. Is the applicant here tonight? Could you come up and, can I give us a?
Hi. My name is Terry Ash and I'm with Deepwell, we are South Roads Technology Park, we're the new owners that took over in February. We have, um, a potential lease with UPS to lease the northeast corner of lot one and all of lot two for the purposes of staging, temporary staging of trailers. This temporary staging would be primarily through November to January. The maximum number of trailers on that site location would be a hundred and twenty-five. Peak days are Saturday, with also days, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday seeing some traffic. The peak outovers for those traffic times are two AM to seven AM and seven PM to nine PM. The average trips per day would be roughly ten, with only one to two drivers for those trailer movements.
If I might, Mr. Chair, um, since this is a rezoning request, we probably should leave the details of the conditional use permit for the next public hearing.
Okay.
So, um, we'll just go ahead and, and stick to the rezoning request at this time. Thank you.
Alright, if you want to take a seat and I'll open this up to public hearing? Is there anyone present that wishes to speak for or against this matter?
Hey, good evening, my name is Steve Denton, uh, I'm with UPS and we're the ones looking to, uh, to lease this property. I thought I could maybe just give a little more context of what we plan to do with that, that land. And if that's something that needs to go some other time, I can do that later on too.
Well, uh, the, uh, the tonight's, uh, agenda is to request a, or to change the zoning. And that would not be conditional on you guys using that, at that lot for that reason. Ie, after tonight, if we approve it, if it gets changed, they could turn around and do it for anything that would be a lot in the new rezoning. So I think the staff was kind of saying we don't want to fixate on the details of the proposed plan.
Sure.
But rather that we want to focus on the, the act of rezoning, which is what we are overview of.
Makes sense.
Sir, I would say if you want to go ahead and voice your, um, support of it, go ahead and do that now. And then details with the UPS conditional use permit, we'll do it then, at the public hearing after this one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, for sure, so, yeah, that's, it's something, of course, that UPS is, uh, all for. Um, we, we are looking to, to use some land to store some, um, some trailers, uh, again, it's just for a short period of time, but, um, it is a challenge to, to find, uh, property that's close by to our facility that we can use for, for spacing or leasing, uh, leasing land for our storage of our equipment temporarily for peak season. Uh, so for sure UPS is, uh, all for this, um, I can give more details later on.
Okay, thank you. And then, did, did you sign into that sheet? Alright. It, is there anyone else here that would like to speak for or against on the record? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, what are your thoughts, your wishes? Um, as a reminder, we're folk, this item is the focusing on the rezoning and the conditional use permit would be the next item, uh, that we would discuss.
Mr. Chair, if I may, a question for staff. The, uh, surrounding area to the, uh, north, I believe it, uh, used to be known as the Sears area. Uh, in, in driving by the area, I noticed that they have a fair number of, uh, semi tractor trailers parked in that area. My question is, is the zoning consistent then with this change that's being proposed?
As you can see, the adjacent zonings, uh, zonings along the Fort Crook Road corridor are industrial. Um, I don't have any issue with requested change of zone to BGH.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Question for staff. You know, really, this application is paired with the next one in terms of the rezoning, followed by the, the conditional use. Since there's recommendation of denial on the second one, what's the purpose of rezoning? I guess why wouldn't it be the rezoning contingent on if we also approve or whatever the recommendation would follow on the second one?
The rezoning request with BGH goes along with the comp plan and what is already in the neighborhood. Um, that's why I don't have any issue with the change of zone. South Roads, the South Roads Technology Park has changed greatly, I would say, in the last five years or so. Um, previously where you had retail and then vacant space, you're going to have two schools that are operating out of that location. So you have Cornerstone Christian School, which is a K through twelve on the north end of the building. And you have OPS utilizing the south end of the building. Um, which to my understanding temporarily, but that's a five to ten year lease option for them to be there. They will primarily use the space as elementary, they have indicated they may use it, um, for a middle school situation as well. Um, as far as the zoning goes, the BGH zoning still allows for the use of the schools. Again, I don't have any issue with zoning. The issue I have, and I can get into it now, with the conditional use permit is one of the things that, um, the planning commission in the city has to find is that there are no safety concerns with the conditional use permit. I guess, um, I have concerns with safety, just because you've got two playgrounds, you've got a bus route going right next to the proposed leasing area. Um, I don't believe that heavy truck traffic and playgrounds and school buses mix well, but that's just my opinion.
Question for staff, so it, it's hard because we all know what's coming next, right? So if we set that aside, what, big picture, what's the big difference between BG with the, with the PCO versus BGH? What, what are some uses that they could do with BGH that they can't do today?
It allows them a wider range of commercial uses, um, it cuts shy of any industrial uses. Obviously, a text amendment was done several months ago to allow for conditional use for the parking of trucks and trailer in a BGH zoning district. That's another major difference between BG and BGH. Um, I can list some of the uses that are allowed in BGH. It allows for things like animal hospital, vet clinic, um, varied retail, um, different shops, uh, it allows for a grocery store, it allows for general office space, um, it allows for a medical clinic. Also allows for automobile sales as a permitted use, um, allows for a call center. So some of those are similar to the BG, a few of those are not allowed in the BG, but they're allowed in the BGH.
Okay, and then the planned center overlay district, uh, has some language in here about, um, under special provisions. It's talks about with the PCO that the entire parcel of land is considered one zoning lot. As opposed to, I don't see that in BGH, so is there a positive or negative to, right now it's one big zoning lot? As opposed to if it goes to BGH, now they come in and separate it up?
The PCO overlay, uh, it requires site plan approval for new construction, so that would be one difference. Um, the straight BGH would not require any type of site plan approval, it for new construction, as long as it was allowable use under the current guidelines.
Obviously, they'd have to come to, uh, before this commission and the city council if they were going to break it up into multiple lots with the BGH, right?
Not, well.
They were going to rezone it and.
If they were going to rezone it, yes, but if they're just doing a plat and it meets certain requirements, not necessarily.
Okay, thank you.
Staff for myself, is there any other, uh, PCO plan, you know, overlays zoned in that area or is it just that lot?
There's a small one just to the south, um, but for the most part, no. Looks like that's the last major one that is along the corridor in that location.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't removing the middle of a, of a overlay district.
Correct.
Commissioners? Would anybody like to make a motion for or against, any more comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, if I might like to make a motion?
Mr. Jacobson?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone lots one and two at the South Roads Technology Park from BG dash PCO to BGH for the purpose of further commercial development on, based on the lack perceived negative impact surrounding the area and conforming with our zoning and comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Jacobson, second by Hankins?
Six voted yes, one no, motion carried.
Ms. Van Horn, for the record, communicate who voted no.
Ms. Kane?
Thank you.
This, this item will go in front of the city council for public hearing, for public reading on October sixth? For the next item. Item three C, request for a conditional use permit for lots one and two, South Roads Technology Park and for the purpose of the temporary parking of trucks and trailers. Applicant, UPS, general location one zero zero one Fort Cook Road North. Case number C U P dash two zero zero seven dash zero two. Mr. Denton?
Is this, is this the part?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, again, my name is Steve Denton, uh, I'm with UPS here in Omaha, I've been there for, uh, twenty-one years. My title is Industrial Engineer Section Leader, so what that means is I do all the planning for the hub, which is the building that we have there that operates, um, primarily from four PM to, um, four AM. Uh, sorting packages that come in off the street today, um, so that's the hub part, the feeder part is the, the feeder drivers. And that's kind of what we're talking about here is the, the semi tractor trailer drivers. Uh, UPS is looking to, um, use this, use this space, uh, for parking of trailers during our peak season. So, uh, right around Thanksgiving, volume drastically increases. Um, before that time period, early November, we will start leasing trailers to stage at a location, uh, that we can pull from throughout the peak season, from Thanksgiving, uh, through Christmas. That we can pull from, fill up with packages and then, uh, move on to the destination. Uh, the, the peak, the peak trailer count would be around a hundred and twenty-five. From that peak number, it would drop throughout the peak season. Uh, after the peak season, uh, there would be a few still remaining, guessing around forty, until we get them removed, uh, or get those returned back to, uh, the rental companies. Uh, UPS, uh, has a long history of, uh, safe driving, um, and, and being, um, working very well or working a lot with our drivers to make sure that they understand the methods and, you know, they're good citizens and good partners with, with the, uh, with the, with the company around them or with the, uh, the towns around them. Very, very few incidents, uh, last year, we were actually, we're on this site and we didn't have any issues at all. Talk about the, the operational part of it, again, we're going to have the trailers staged out there. Um, probably, you know, roughly ten times a day, we go out there to retrieve a trailer and then take it back to the main UPS building. Most of those hours happen, or most of the activity that will happen, um, post seven PM. Uh, there is an outside chance that we need to come on property during the day to retrieve a trailer. A lot of the activity would take place on, on Saturdays, uh, to restock our, our main, uh, supply, uh, there at the Omaha building. Uh, again, the, the safety piece, you know, um, we are around schools, uh, around other businesses, uh, all day, every day, not just in Omaha, but throughout the country. Um, so being around others and making sure that we're watching, make sure that there's nobody that's going to be endangered, is a common practice for, for us at UPS. Uh, we have the highest, highest, um, qualified drivers, uh, of, of anyone in the industry. And again, we take, uh, uh, great pride in being, being safe. That's it.
Okay.
You guys have questions for me or do I sit back down?
Um, I, you can stay there for a second, is there anybody else from the public that wishes, oh, so if you want to step by and?
There's a pin. So Brian Bartels here, um, I'm the board president of, uh, both Cornerstone Christian School and Deepwell. And I kind of wanted to kind of give you a little concept of where we're coming from, what Deepwell's about, so you can kind of understand why we're, we purchased the property. Uh, Deepwell is a nonprofit for children's education. And we focus on, uh, supporting both Cornerstone, but we're also supporting, uh, Omaha Puppet Schools. And we also have, uh, our first school in Malawi, Africa. We will have more schools overseas and what we found was if we can bring curriculum to these overseas schools, to children that don't have a way to have a school, that they'll be able to go to college. So we've partnered with some of the Jesuit universities that will take our, our children once, in fact, in Malawi, Africa, they'll all go to college. We, every month, every bit of funding that we make is, goes to children or goes to feeding the hungry. This will help us actually do this a little bit. We've, um, and we can give you the details. We've actually coordinated with O, both OPS and UPS to make sure the safety is clear on this. They have their, they're gonna be fenced in and if, and if required, we'll put the, a separate entrance in for them. And we've also, uh, coordinated so they only can come in at certain times. It's gonna be during the night when the children are not there, right? So that's, that's key from, from my perspective to make sure the safety is clear so that, you see, it's a pretty large space. So if you, uh, if you look at the north end here, that's Cornerstone. And that's, that entrance is a double entrance during the day where Cornerstone comes on the inner side and the buses for OPS come on the outer side of that entrance. The trucks won't even be there at that time, but if required, we can make another entrance because we purchased that little thing called two. See, we just re, we just did a purchase agreement on that one. We can actually require UPS to put another entrance in on that end if, if, if that would. If that actually is, is, uh, if you feel that's a safer way to do it. Right now, we, we, we feel that they're gonna de-conflicted on time and then also they're gonna be completely gated. So the children, even if the children were running out somewhere where they shouldn't be, they're not gonna be able to get where the trucks are. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on the record for or against?
I just wanted to add that, uh, if you look at that site plan, do you have the map where we showed the, uh, gate, the entire fencing area? Cause this might kinda help explain. Most of the traffic, uh, as far as UPS is concerned, will come off of that Camp Brewster Road. And there's only one entrance, um, on the campus on that north side. I'll wait till you bring it up. It'll make more sense. That's all right. Cause we, like you, we are concerned with safety and so we're not, we wanna make sure that you understand what we're proposing because we, uh, we're all about the kids. So we don't want any safety issues either. Okay, so the blue area is actually the UPS proposed area. That entire area will be gated, um, with at least a six-foot high fence. UPS might even be able to give you more details on the exact fencing that they're looking at. The gate would be right off that entrance. So as that truck comes in, it's going directly into the gated area. It's not driving into the parking lot. It's not making a U-turn. It is driving directly into its gated area. So as far as safety concerns, we shouldn't, there won't be any semis driving through our parking lot, you, you know, even if kids were out. Those semis will be in their contained area. So I just wanted to make that note.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to make a comment on the record for or against this motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up to commissioners. Commissioners, questions, thoughts?
Ms. Kane, can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
We had some letters of concern from, uh, residents in that area. And part of our responsibility as commissioners, planning commissioners, is to be concerned about the health, safety, welfare of all citizens, not just the children. I, I can't disagree. I taught for forty-two years. Can't disagree that the safety of children is major. But we have, uh, people who commented to us in the letters about the noise and the times of the day in the middle of the, early, early morning, waking them up. This concerns the health of many of residents in that area besides their safety, especially if these people are older. And this concerns me tremendously. And I wonder what you would do. I mean, your working hours are supposedly, or your busiest hour will be four PM to four AM. This is the time that most people, if they are still working, are home to have time with their family. And if they're annoyed or bothered by the truck noise, how do you plan on doing something about that for the citizens in that area, the residents?
Something a little bit different, uh, that I didn't cover, that would happen this year versus last year. Last year, we did use this space also for, uh, employee parking. We didn't have enough space at our main location. We didn't think we did, so we leased, we used that top corner for, uh, employee parking too. So we had, uh, anywhere from, uh, ten to fifty cars parked there, along with the twenty-four hour shuttle running. This year, that is not the plan. We're gonna be able to keep everybody on property there at UPS. Uh, in regards to the tractor or in, in truck, um, noise, um, we are running at idle, um, you know, at all times. We don't use shake brakes or anything like that. Um, I would say it's, it's comparable to what's already going up and down the street, um, along whatever ma, sorry, whatever major road is right there. Um, there would be some, uh, noise from disconnecting hoses, uh, from the brake lines. But again, we're talking, um, max per day of ten and not all ten would be happening in the middle of the night.
Thank you.
I guess question or comment for staff? I know last, uh, fall, I believe, we had several hearings. The location across the street where OPS is building a school and we raised a number of safety concerns. And at that time, the city recommended approval on that application. In this case, it seems like we have a much more confined area where the truck traffic would be coming in. It's gonna be six-foot fenced. There are various routes for the kids coming in around that fencing. Um, and on this case, we're recommending denial. Again, denial is consistent with what I suggested on our application with the school across the street. But I'm curious as to how we, we square those two recommendations.
For me, this is a specific conditional use permit where you are gonna have, uh, trucks parking in the same lot as the two schools. You've got two schools, not just one. The elementary school across the street, you don't have trucks parked in the parking lot. Um, a little bit different situation there. With that application, the concern was children getting to school, um, which the city felt was adequately addressed by OPS. So the difference to me is you now have trucks that are on the same property, um, that will be making movements on the same property as two elementary schools that are there.
The applicant correct when they said their movements would be limited to times outside of the school hours?
The information that we have in the packet that was submitted by the applicant, they submitted information that said OPS is requesting UPS should have zero to limited mobility from seven to nine AM and three to five PM weekdays. The response from the applicant was we cannot commit to zero, but movement levels will be similar to last year. They then pulled movements from their busiest week last year and indicated most of their movements during that timeframe were on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Um, where on a Tuesday morning, they had zero movements, seven to nine AM, but they had eleven movements, three to five PM. On a Wednesday, they had four movements from seven to nine AM and zero movements, three to five PM.
If the applicant were to agree to limit their movements outside of school hours, an hour on each side of it, would that give us any different recommendation from staff in terms of not mixing children at parking lots and trucks?
I think that it would give me some. However, I believe that would be very difficult to enforce. If you get a complaint and code enforcement goes out there, the best we can do is have a code enforcement sit there for hours on end to count movements. So my concern with that would be having to enforce that type of clause in a, in a permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a question for, uh, UPS if I might?
Yeah.
If you would step up to the microphone? Thanks. In terms of, uh, traffic, I think I've got a pretty good picture of what happens in this fenced-in area. I'm not so sure I've got a good understanding at ten thousand feet, what happens on the Fort Crook Road or if these trucks will ever go west of, uh, Fort Crook area or is, so could you go into a little bit about the intention of the traffic patterns that'll happen as you enter and exit the campus itself?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, UPS up there on, on Q Street, uh, the, the, the way that we, uh, came down last year was off of Q Street, we went on seventy-five. And then I'm, I'm gonna.
Fort Crook is right here.
Q Street's a lot further north.
Yeah.
So when then off of seventy-five, we would have taken Chandler.
Yeah, Chandler's right here.
Would have been the travel path.
That was, uh, my concern is, uh, Twenty-Fifth Street and the area directly to the south of the elementary school that's under construction.
Yeah.
And as, as you see things today, there's no intent in moving trucks along that, that part of the road system.
Yeah, last year we would have, you know, I misspoke. Last year we would have gone all the way up to L Street because the Q Street Bridge was, was closed. Um, but thankfully that's, that's open now. So it'd be Q Street to seventy-five.
But you won't necessarily be on any of the two-lane roads in front of the school or Twenty-Fifth Street, which is basically a two-lane road, north-south, just a little bit further west.
Um, can you pull that one up? So this is the elementary school. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Right here, where it remind, yep.
Okay, I'll move this over to Twenty-Fifth at now?
Up, up in here.
Oh, no, yeah, we'll be up in there.
So you won't be, uh, exiting and coming into the street and heading up north. That way you'll always be on Fort Crook, basically, all things said and done. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question before you sit down first? Has UPS or has South Roads Technology Park had any kind of discussion or meeting with the residents that are around that area concerning this?
I have, I have not. UPS has not.
About South Roads?
For the record, guys, nope. Okay. Just the, the camera can't see out into the audience. That's right. Um, Mr. Denton, sorry, I. You're getting your cardio, you know, up, down. Uh, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things for my own. You're gonna have trailers stored on the site. About a peak, a hundred and twenty-five trailers parked there, just left. You're gonna come grab them as you need them. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, you say that you're expecting maybe ten either coming or going in a day at max. Is that correct?
Yeah, roughly ten.
Okay, so we're looking at an aver, uh, uh, a peak any given day of ten extra trucks on coming and going from that lot, correct?
Correct.
All right. Um, the trailers that you're storing there are all gonna be empty or?
They will be empty, yeah, for, uh, security reasons for UPS. We wouldn't wanna leave any packages on, on those trailers.
Okay.
They'll be empty.
And then when I look at the, the map of the fence, is that gonna be one hundred percent fenced in? Like you cannot get, you, no kid could walk there as they're walking to school? There's gonna be a gate to drive to, that you would have to walk through to get to it? Or is that just a fence to kinda delineate the two parking lots?
Well, there would be a fence to separate the, the two parking spaces. Uh, we would need, uh, one gate to get the trucks in and out. And that would be it. We wouldn't need any, um, openings for a walk path or anything like that. So just basically a drive-through gate.
Okay, so there, so a kid that's walking down, that's going to the school, would not be able to decide to wander in and go look at the trucks without climbing a fence or getting, you know, okay.
Correct.
Mr. Denton, what type of fence are you guys proposing?
Well, uh, you know, I heard six-foot fence, uh, around our, uh, most of our buildings. We do, um, yeah, it's six-foot fence with some type of security thing on top, just to make sure people aren't climbing over, you know?
Like what kind of security?
Like usually we just do type of barbed wire on, along the.
Barbed wire is not allowed in city limits, so you wouldn't be able to do any kind of razor wire or barbed wire.
They would be, to, to clarify, they would, um, anything that they would put up there would have to be per codes, regulations, permit, incorrect?
Correct. And for the record, one of the things I would request, it was listed as a technical deficiency in the report. Um, I would like a updated site plan before this moves forward to city council, just calling out the type of fencing that will be used on the site plan. Thank you.
My last question, this is kind of to, to both of you, um, to staff. If we approve this tonight and it gets approved by city council, this is indefinite, correct? This is not just for this one year, for this contract. If they decide to, to, um, uh, increase their facility, they don't want it next year. That conditional use is still allowed if they wanna bring in another vendor or somebody else. Is that correct?
The conditional use would stay with the property. Um, we could, through the conditional use permit agreement, put certain restrictions on there to limit it more, um, than just a regular conditional use permit. But the conditional use permit, yes, does run with the property.
Can, can you come to the, for the record? Thank you.
I would recommend that you would do that. You would not allow us to ever do anything else without a conditional permit back to you. That, that's what I, if I was you.
So you're, you're saying that, um, limiting this to, say, a condition of one year?
To come in.
Yes.
You could even limit and say, I wanna give a one year and they have to come back again, make sure that everything's good. If, if that's what, if, if you're really concerned about, or six months or something like that, have us come back, right? Um, or, but indefinitely, I, if I was you, I would not allow me, the owner, to bring anybody else in without coming back for another conditional. To show, because of the children.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one more question if I might?
Yes, sir.
This is actually for the, uh, Technology Park people, so I guess you're gonna have to get your cardio in as well. Thank you. Uh, I recall when, uh, South Roads was, uh, fully operational as a strip mall. Uh, there were a number of times that, uh, residents, um, along that back wall where your proposed fenced-in area is for UPS, uh, had not only raised issues about, uh, sound and traffic, which are already in the record, but also about lighting as well. And as the, uh, property owner, at one time, there were sodium vapor lights in there. Uh, is lighting going to be looked at?
So we, we've done our best to kinda upgrade all the lighting. There were some of it that was, um, um, that was, there, we had some electrical issues. We had to bring some electricians out to make sure. Lighting's key for us because of the children. We also have teachers that are coming and going during the dark periods, uh, you know, when the, when the sunlight is less during the winter months. We wanna make sure there's safety out there. We're also gonna be adding cameras. Uh, that's one of, one of my requirements to, uh, to bring more security to the area. We could add additional lights if, if, if you require that, but right now, we think we have enough light. If you, if you go, if you go out there and check right now with all the lights that were on there.
Well, and actually, uh, I was thinking just the opposite in terms of, uh, hearing what some of the homeowners have said is it's sometimes too much lighting into their house at two in the morning is something that they, uh, can't sleep on, so to speak. And so proper designed lighting that would be only on the property itself and not onto the homeowners.
Never received complaints about our lighting, right? No, no. We, we did have, uh, some, some kids get in there and they were doing donuts and we caught them on camera and we called the police. But that was, was about six months ago. We didn't, I don't know, we didn't receive any complaints during that time, which I thought was funny.
Yeah, and, and my history with South Roads goes back, uh, uh, I just won't say how far back it goes, but.
Yeah, we'd like to eventually, I'll, I'll tell you, we'd like to, uh, as soon, as soon as, you know, and we've talked with OPS and both Cornerstone. We like to fence both sites all the way down on both either sides, right, to even make it safer. Right now, we don't have the funding yet to do that, but we, you know, we've talked to OPS about that. We'd like to eventually do that.
Thank you.
Before you sit down, can I ask you a question too? I'll save you some steps. So I think I have a pretty good idea of where Cornerstone's playground is. Can you just walk us through the actual movement of of students during the day? I I don't believe Cornerstone students will be impacted at all by this decision because I think it's all contained on what I'm gonna call the north side, right? Kids are going out of the building into a fenced-in area and back into the building. They're not crossing any.
Cornerstone's fenced on either side.
Yep.
Um, now, that area that we're talking about, the trucks, Cornerstone wants to put a football track there. So this is this is def- this UPS thing is definitely temporary until uh now we we come back to you again with the plans. So that area that we're talking about with the trucks, Cornerstone eventually wants to put some, like I said, a tr- a small track and a pr- and a ch- and a soccer track, football field. That's their plan with that space. Um, but right now, they are fenced with openings that they opened when the when the parents drop off either side on that on that space up to the north.
And then where's OPS? Is I think I can see it kind of in that other site plan?
If you walk out of the building, it's hard to say. And there you go. That's it. That's their that's their playground, and it's fenced also.
The the kids have to walk, though, outside of a fence from the building through an area that's not fenced.
It's 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 actually, there's only a little opening that they closed that the buses would drop off, but other than that, the the children would come right out of the building and go right in that fenced playground and go right back in again.
So they're they're inside the fence the entire time?
In the fence the whole time, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions for staff. Um, can you just tell us a little bit about what triggered the city to investigate or bring this forward? Was there complaints that you were getting from neighbors? Was it a code enforcement thing? What what triggered that? They did it last year and all of a sudden they need to come to us and get permission?
There were complaints that uh were submitted to code enforcement, and so that's what triggered the issue. Um, code enforcement then went out and notified the property owner that it was not properly zoned to have the large trucks and trailers on the property.
Okay. Um, are there any screening requirements in the new zoning that we just uh approved, the VGH? Are there are there screening requirements?
Yes, there's fencing requirements, fence to be approved by the planning department. That's why I was asking what type of fence that they were proposing, because on the site plan, it indicates a six-foot fence, but it doesn't say what.
So are you thinking it would need to be solid or something to help, going back to Mrs. Kane's comments about the neighbors and noise and seeing these trucks? I mean, is it something that you envisioned it needs to be a a solid privacy fence?
I don't think that's gonna matter based on the topography over there. Um, I think they're gonna look down on those anyway.
Thank you.
Question for the the UPS representative, if you wouldn't mind coming up again? If we were to recommend approval on this, subject to your hours of access being outside of school hours, would you be willing to accept that restriction?
It would, it could hinder um UPS's operation and and capacity, uh, just because there are, you know, things come up not planned where we need to retrieve trailers. That would be something that we would consider if if that's the uh the point where it's, you know, a yes or a no. Um, but in the in the write-up I did provide, you know, we will limit our time, you know, our time is already limited to there anyway, because in that peak week of last year, during those times of concerns, we were only on property Tuesday and Wednesday. We weren't there Monday, Thursday, or Friday. So, again, if it's something that's, you know, the deciding factor, it's something that we would certainly consider for sure.
In the alternative, if we required that you could only access it from the new area that the gentleman said they recently bought, or another access point could be put in, which means that you would be entirely within the fenced area when you're entering and leaving.
Yeah, so we'd be taking apart of that grass and putting in an entrance there?
Correct.
Is the idea?
Assuming curb cuts and everything else.
Yes, as far as as far as access there or just a bit uh to the west, it's it's all the same for uh UPS. My only concern would be from a safety aspect is that you do have that house uh right there. Uh, it looks like they have a driveway backing in and out there.
Yeah, you have a couple, if you get, you're exactly right, if you get farther to the east and you have residential driveways, that would be adjacent.
And the going, the the to and from from that road um would be where any noise concerns would happen. So the further you go east, the closer you are to those houses. So it it may make more sense just to use the existing uh entrance and then to just have our gate immediately right there. But open to either one.
Mr. Casey, I think you know a thing or two about buses. How do you how do you feel about trucks and parking lots if there's fencing and you got two schools where it seems like we can restrict the children from being near the trailers?
Well, I I actually was gonna suggest the same thing that you did, if you could possibly totally separate your operations from anything else that's happening in that parking lot. Obviously, that would be ideal. Uh, and for my clarification, virtually every every bit of traffic that's gonna come into that parking lot, whether it be Cornerstone, buses, parents, and your vehicles, are gonna come in that same entrance as it stands right now, correct?
So that that was from our.
Can I have the camera?
From our perspective, that was our recommendation. Our board recommendation was to put another entrance in, you know, you or, you know, just widening that entrance doesn't really do it for me. There is room, if you look at that entrance right there, to just put another entrance right there where they are only going into that space and coming out of that space. They're never entering the other property at all.
As an alternative to that, uh, would it be if there's an issue with putting a a entrance closer to the homes and with easement issues, putting another entrance further to the west for all the other traffic other than the UPS traffic?
We can. It's it's a little bit, so I'll just tell you, there's a step up. What you're not seeing in this view, in the three-D view, you'll see that there's a it kind of goes, there's a good three or four-foot step down it when you go to the west there. So it makes it a little bit more difficult to do a straight entrance. We widen the entrance from what you saw right now to three lanes to make sure we got room for you, the the buses and Cornerstone to come in at the same time when they come. But I believe there's good room right where that intersection is to do another entrance. That's one of the reasons we bought that property, so we we could do another entrance there.
When when we designed schools, uh, especially in the last twenty years or so, the one of the ultimate goals is to separate all school bus traffic and parent traffic, get those two things away from each other. That's where issues always arise. And now you're adding a third element of putting trucks, and I although I, you know, appreciate the fact it will be limited during school hours, that that is still a concern of mine, that uh if there's a way to get some positive separation there, that would certainly, in my mind, make it a a much easier sell.
I mean, we're we're happy to do it. Like I said, that's why we bought we bought that property, so we could make sure we, whatever we needed to do. It's flat there, so it's easy to do an entrance.
Um, as a suggestion for what you guys were talking about, um, I think we're all defaulting to putting the fencing along the curb so that the grass. Um, Mr. Denton, I don't know if you would need the entire space, but could you guys possibly move the the front of the fence back somewhat so that your truck could enter that entrance completely and then get to your gate? I.e., anyone coming in, your truck would come in, drive, it would be completely out of the way, people could drive around you to do that. Um, I guess that would go back to what Tammy was saying with the site plan of where the fence really would lie lay at. But I guess what I'm suggesting is instead of having delineation right in the entrance where you pull off the street at, if you utilize some of the parking space there to actually allow for the traffic to separate. Um, I don't know if that would alleviate Mr. Casey's concerns um about the the traffic, but um kind of where the green line does the angle at, or a little bit further south from there, put the entrance in there so that you're not, you know, just kind of separated a little bit. That's just a suggestion for providing a fence-in plan, um, which would be required for by staff no matter what. Um, does that make? Was that articulate enough for that?
Yeah, just looking at what we have laid out there, I mean, I think anywhere along that west perimeter of that blue line, we can put a gate. Uh, so whatever makes the most sense, we can put that anywhere and and exit that. If I remember right, you know, as far as the depth from east to west, there's plenty of space in there to pull in straight.
Yep.
And then hang it right, so either of those solutions work.
Okay, that's just a suggestion. I don't know if that would help staff or um that. Um, this is a question for staff. Uh, obviously, to do this, they're gonna have to take over quite a large portion of the parking lot. Is the required parking for the remaining uses of the building still met with what's not being taken?
Correct. They have an abundance of parking, so they don't have an issue there.
Okay.
Um, I do want to speak to a secondary access. You know, we've kind of discussed putting another access to the east. I would caution, I don't know that that's possible, just because there's specific engineering requirements about uh commercial driveways and spacing, and I don't know that they would be able to meet that. Um, off the top of my head, I don't remember what that spacing requirement is for a commercial drive, but there's not a lot of frontage there on that lot, so I don't know that that would be possible with another commercial driveway.
Mr. Chair.
Um, I strongly agree with Commissioner Kane. Um, I used to work at Worded Enterprises, and when you disengage um trailers, it is like a shotgun blast, like these neighbors are saying. So I I have a hard time voting for this because of the noise aspect.
Can I ask Mr. Denton a question again?
Yes.
We talked a little bit ago about uh limiting, making this so it's not indefinite. Does that would that affect your investment into putting all this into this if we would say we're gonna do it for a one year and then come back and have a rediscussion? I mean, obviously, you're gonna have some investment into fencing and concrete and maybe a new entrance and all of that. Does that does that change your thinking at all if we would limit this to like one year and then reassess it?
I guess I'm not familiar with the specifics of what my real estate company and the property owner um have agreed upon as far as length of uh lease. My role in this was just making sure that we have enough space. Um, but knowing um the challenges of finding space, um, I'm sure uh UPS would be okay with the investment for only a a one-year solution. Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment to Commissioner? So I'm struggling with this because we just changed the zoning on this. And the zoning we went to allows uses that have almost just as robust noise and traffic as what we are talking about. I mean, the BGH zoning allows drive-ins, gas stations, railroad spurs, those types of things that they could do and not have to come before us, correct? And so now we're debating, so I'm I'm really struggling because we we all um, majority voted to change the zoning to allow those types of uses, and now we're debating about it, the safety of those uses that we just said was okay to use. So I'm just, I guess, thinking out loud here, it's just it's hard because we're, you know, we just said, oh, let's change the zoning to this to make it work, but then now we're questioning whether this is safe as opposed to if it was a gas station being safe or not.
I would point out that this uh particular use is listed as a conditional use, not a permitted use by right, and it's for that reason, it is a conditional use so that the planning commission and City Council can look at it as a case-by-case basis based on location.
Question for staff, looking at this one different angle, I guess a little farther south on Fort Crook, I can recall we had several car lot applications came in some number of years ago, and I think we denied those just based on we didn't want car lots and things on Fort Crook Road. Is there any element of that in our thinking here with the denial, or is it purely on the safety feature? Again, it's not a car lot, but it's got trailers parked for three months.
Correct. This is specifically in regards to Section six-point-oh-six in regards to standards um for the particular area, for the community, for the health, safety, um, for it being a detriment to the neighborhood, things of that nature. So it's specific to the conditional use.
Yes. My thoughts on this, it's ten trailers a day. Um, it's not much, unfortunately, if all si- if six of those were, you know, uh, overnight, you would, the the residents may notice. I've never heard this particular trailers hook up, disconnect. Um, I think that they've addressed the kids' issue. Um, I kind of think that this is a conditional use if it had a timeline on it of the uh one year to basically kind of say, listen, we're gonna try this out if uh the city comes back and says, we got a complaint every single night because of attachment or the fence was not good or something like that. Um, I guess my personal thought is, you know, a one-year trial, and then if the applicants wish to continue this arrangement going forward, that um they take the time to address these issues and make more permits, solution, uh, yep.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment is uh, and I don't know how many complaints. One or two, whatever, I don't know how many complain. The the key is, we really want to use this for children and and for tr- football fields and some lights later on. If you if we're gonna have an issue every time we try to do something where there's lights and there's people working and children are playing, um, we're gonna probably have to move the school someplace else. So what I I want you guys to know that I know this is a couple of trucks, and I I understand this. But we are going, we intend to use to build out a large school on that property, so something to kind of think about.
Yeah, and to clarify, my noise thoughts were more of if it was at two o'clock in the morning versus I would imagine the football field would, which I think would be a great, you know, could be a great use of that spot space depending on specifics, but I was more thinking of a tra- uh trailer hooking up at two o'clock in the morning, making a loud noise, waking up a dog, something like that. Um.
I guess the one thing I would point out, if you're looking at considering recommending just a one-year trial, so to say, um, to be fair to the applicant, what would be the guideline for them not to get it renewed? Is one complaint too many? Is five complaints too many? I mean, I think it'd be difficult to provide that type of baseline in this type of situation.
Good point.
Question for staff, what uh what would be the timeline for this to be if if it went forward to be approved by City Council?
So, public hearing on the rezoning would be October sixth. So the third and final reading of the rezoning and the public hearing for the conditional use permit would coincide on the same date. It would be October twentieth.
And and then I hate to ask you to come back up again, but uh the the timeline that you would really start using this area?
Yeah, so the the trailers that we use for Peak, we call those Big Bang trailers. Typically, those arrive in October. I can store those on property in Omaha until closer to Thanksgiving. Uh, the reason that we can't, we have to vacate vacate that space at Omaha around Thanksgiving is because we fire up what we call Peak Village. We have a whole nother facility that opens up at that time, and that and all that space uh will need to be used for the Peak Village. So at that time, I at that time, I need to get all those trailers off that property. So they start arriving in Omaha around October. I can hold off until uh mid-November to bring them down on property.
So so my point in those two questions was i- is there time to even go back and and for you or for the uh property owner to to relook at the separation issue? Uh, obviously, I don't think you can do anything about the noise issue. Trucks backing up to hook up and the beep-beep-beep and the banging, and that's gonna happen regardless. But but I I guess I think what I'm hearing is really not even an uh ti- a ti- timeline doesn't allow you to go back and relook at uh how you could change the entrance to alleviate the traffic concerns.
Sure. Yeah, the timeline would be tight, um, for sure, but uh, you know, uh, the biggest challenge that we usually have with doing anything is the permit side of it. So if we had permission to move forward, those usually we can make things happen pretty quickly. Uh, just one other comment with the noise. Uh, if you think about the layout of that area, I don't know necessarily where the the residents are that hear the, they're voicing their concern with the noise, but there is that giant wall back there. I would think a lot of that would echo back towards Fort Crook uh and not carry up over top of that. Uh, but again, I don't know necessarily where those concerns are coming from.
Another question for staff, um, the individual that submitted the concern, uh, a lot of general concerns with truck horns, et cetera. Uh, do you happen to know which house that is that that individual lives in?
Um, one of the emails did not have a. Um, one of the emails did not have a address. The other one is 2012 Grandview. Give me one second, I can pull that up. And I'm not seeing her on here.
It's a big, um, blocky, scroll down. The big, right there, she says 2012.
Oh, there she is.
Kinda like an acreage lot right there, that's the one that.
Good eyes, Mr. Arnie. Yep, right here.
That's the 2012.
Yes, this highlighted property right here, so she has a portion of her property that abuts the parking lot.
Mr. Chair, a question for staff, if I might? Um, my, back of my mind, I'm trying to dissuade myself from looking at other, uh, parallels to this that we might have in the area, and I'm thinking of the area around, uh, just east of, uh, Kennedy Freeway and, uh, Cornhusker. We have a large, big box commercial area with a warehouse area that we, uh, as a commission approved to go in there that has a lot of truck traffic. And we also approved an apartment complex not too far from there. Um, I think of Wilson Concrete, which is near, when it was active, near fairly residential areas, and so I'm trying to draw a distinction between this and, and those other areas. I was wondering if staff could, could help me out with that.
I can't. I would remind you on the apartment situation in Wolf Creek, staff actually recommended denial for that very reason.
I appreciate that and noted.
That's the one thing I would point out there. Um, as far as Wilson Concrete, you know, that was their first. Um, you know, that I, if memory serves correctly, that was there prior to probably that residential district being approved. So people probably or should have known what they were getting into. You also have the railroad tracks right there.
Yeah, I was just gonna, just going to agree with you that also along the railroad tracks, we're probably there well before any of the housing went along. At the time, Fort Crook was incredibly busy compared to, to what it is today. And so the traffic noise along Fort Crook at one time was much higher for those residents
Sure.
than we see today, and I don't know if it's just a matter of, um, and I hate to, I know what the, the sound of a diesel accelerating up and down your street is at two in the morning or nearby versus, uh, not, but the, the relatively lack of activity on Fort Crook has lulled us into looking at this maybe a little differently than, than maybe we have. Thank you.
Well, from my perspective, it seems like with our modern technology and people ordering more and more online with the COVID we've had, I mean, it's just becoming a fact of life that we've got more trucks, more shipments. There's gotta be places for these to go. I don't know how long this will be there or what the temporary nature of it will be. Appreciate the concerns of the neighbors with the noise. Fact of the matter is, South Roads Mall was built in, what, mid-sixties? I believe from old pictures I've seen, there used to be houses in that area that they picked up and moved or demolished when South Roads went in. Uh, most of the folks that live around there now bought their house knowing that they were next to that facility. Um, changes always hard, but, uh, I think safety, as staff identified, is the number one thing for us to consider. And with a properly crafted motion and with the discussion we've had, it seems like we can get separation between children and buses and truck traffic. Um, as Mr. Ritz has pointed out and the testimony we've heard here today, ten trucks outside of school hours, we're, we're hardly adding a drop in the ocean here in terms of the traffic that's gonna be increased in this area, so from my perspective and with all due respect to staff, I'm gonna probably support a motion for approval on this.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ackley, second by Arnie, and motion as presented, correct?
I guess I should say I hereby make a motion to approve of the application as presented for the conditional use permit, uh, subject to the zoning application also being approved by city council.
Motion by Ackley, still second by Arnie?
Second, yes.
Could I make a request that the motion also include satisfaction of the technical deficiency listed in the staff report?
Agreed satisfaction of technical deficiency and also ensuring that the fencing requirements, uh, and adequate access to the fenced-in area outside of school hours would be part of the CUP.
Staff, I have one side question real quick before we go t- too much further. When I read it into record, I noticed that the applicant is listed as UPS, and that is what I stated it is, okay? Cause on the papers, it, on the first page, it says the applicant is, um, Deepwell DBA, South Roads Technology Park.
That's an error, then they're the property owner, the actual applicant is UPS, so property owner is Deepwell. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So there is a motion by Ackley, second by Arnie, as presented, assuming that they, uh, fix, fix the technical deficiencies listed in the report.
Did you also have something about hours of operation?
And that their hours of operation would be outside of when the school hours are, so that we truly do not have conflict between trucks and children. I don't know if Mr. Arnie, with that addition, if you still second that or not?
Yes, it's gonna be very hard to enforce, but yes, I second it.
Yeah.
You clarify what you just said. Your, your mask made you slightly muffled.
I guess what I would make a motion to approve is this conditional use permit, subject to correcting technical deficiencies, but also that the CUP would specifically note that their hours of operation would be outside of the school hours. And I don't even wanna begin to think about if school gets closed for COVID or how that works in terms of how those get changed, but I think if we have normal school operation hours going from whatever time it ends at 3:30 or 4:00, and if these folks don't pick up and start until then and have school, assuming we have children start driving at 7:00, 7:30, or 8:00, that the morning hours would begin or be cut off before the children would get there. That would be my intent.
So, so again, the, the wording would be specifically that they could not operate outside of those hours that are listed?
Correct.
Okay.
Does staff have enough to write that? Or do we need to clarify anything for that record?
Nope.
Okay.
We are good, so we have a motion and a second. We'll just take the vote.
Motion by Ackley, second by, okay, confirmed by Arnie, the motion, please vote.
Six voted yes, one, Ms. Kane voted no. Motion carried.
This, this item will go to, in front of the city council on October 20th, which coincides with the third reading of the rezoning ordinance? Going forward, is there any new current business, staff?
No, there is not.
This time I'd make a, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Jacobson.
Second by Casey?
Second by Casey.
Motion carried.